From now on, when I sneeze, I'll try to sneeze more friendly.
Hi, I'm John Malison. Welcome to this edition of Connect with Me live on the showroom floor at Ventura TV on this Tuesday. We have a city councilman in the House. He represents District 1. Won't tell you who he is until, well, a couple of minutes from now. 436 ME TV, Option 11. Don't wade through the message. Please save yourself the pain. Hit Option 11 as soon as you call in. A lively discussion on tap today. And welcome back to the program on this Tuesday morning. Usually, we focus on business on this day, but we thought we'd bring one city council member in who is the senior of the group on the Fresno City Council. He's been there the better part of seven years. And believe it or not, if you go to our YouTube channel, he is the second most-watched interview on our YouTube channel, the second most-watched. He's been in office, as I said, seven years, represents District number one. If you want to call in to the program and ask the question today, or two questions, or three, remember, it's only a half-hour show. You can call in at 436 ME TV. Hit Option 11. And don't wade through the message. Today, we're going to be talking about water rates. We'll talk about Measure G. We might touch on it. We know it failed. But did you know that a mailer went out, and also that they are talking about tripling your water rates right here in the city of Fresno? We want to know what you think about that. So call us. Live in our studio right now is the one and only Blong Jeong, who has not been here on this set in more than a year. And I remember when you were running for reelection, you were here, I believe it was last June, the second-most-watched program on our YouTube channel, 436 ME TV. Hit Option 11. You know, he's the oldest member of the city council. He doesn't look yet. He looks like he's 25. He's got his whole career ahead of him.
Thank you so much.
Anyway, call in. The issue today, water rates, and anything else that you want to talk about here on the program, Connect with Me on ME TV Fresno. Back in just a moment.
Frigidaire. We introduce the first home freezer. The first pulsator agitator washer. And now we introduce the Frigidaire Orbit Clean Dishwasher, designed with a unique wash arm that gives you four times more water coverage for a consistently better clean. Frigidaire, over 90 years of legendary innovation. See the full line of Frigidaire appliances at Ventura TV Electronics and Appliances.
One of the good guys, one of the nice guys, one of the senior guys here on the city council in Fresno is here with us today, Blong Jeong. Your second appearance on Connect with Me. How are you?
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the invitation. And I feel somewhat good. Just still trying to hit over that jet lag from my China trip, so it's a little bit tough.
Oh, when did you go to China?
Just about a week ago. Just got back Wednesday. So we were gone for about two and a half weeks.
And so give us a report. How was it?
It was hot. And it was huge. And just a large number of people that, in every single city that we went.
What cities did you hit?
We hit Beijing, Xin, Shanghai, Kuming. We were in the province of Yunnan and Guizhou. So just a chance to kind of get away, first time to go to China, but also a chance for us to kind of find out our Mong roots as well, where we were from, and kind of a good perspective for me and my wife and I.
Any relatives that you saw?
I tried to stay away.
Distance?
Distance.
Oh, you tried to keep your distance because they want money. They want money, Blong.
No, no. You know, when you go to make a relative trip, it's a little bit tougher. You don't get to enjoy the vacation that you want. So it was very, trying to do all the vacation stuff before you do the relative visit.
Yeah, you do the relative. They say, oh, nice to meet you. You're my cousin? Do you have any money you can give us?
No, 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 thank you.
That's usually how it goes.
Sounds like an Asian trait. Did you just have that? I mean...
No, no, that's what the Greeks do. That's what the Greeks do. That's why I say that. You know, you go back to Greece, you see the other, you got any money?
Maybe they don't say it as directly as it did in the community.
Well, not as directly as that, but you know what I mean. They kind of follow you around and see to how much money do you have in your wallet there. But very educational trip, right?
Oh, that was a very important piece in terms of education side, just...
And your heritage. You're looking for roots.
It was important. We didn't even know some of the things that we learned when we came back to, when we went back to China, you know, the different, that different Mong dialects that were there and where we originated from. So it was really a good perspective to kind of see and learn, just because we were from Laos. And, you know, for some of us, younger generation, we think that our history begins in Laos.
Yeah, and it really doesn't.
And then it doesn't.
It does not.
It does not. And so to go back and say, this is where your history really began. This is how it developed, and this is where the community came from. And that was really a very humbling experience.
Were the people friendly?
Extremely, extremely friendly, but just so many people. Just 1.5 billion.
Packed everywhere.
Everywhere, every city. You wouldn't believe it, John. Every city that we went to, whether small, big, or...
Did you have a tour guide, or?
We did. A good friend, who's a professor at one of the universities invited us, showed us around. But just the skyscrapers are massive. Every city had three, four, or five going on at the same time.
Yeah, yeah. Did you see where the Olympics took place a few years ago?
We did. We actually went to one of the Olympic Stadium in Beijing, saw the, I think the...
Still there?
Yeah, still there.
Hotter than...
We tear it down? It's still there, being utilized, but it's...
What do they use it for? Soccer?
Soccer, other activities, but also the site, you know, the areas around, still a tourist site. So you saw a lot of that. And there was a food court. Incredible food. I mean, just spices, morning breakfast, you know, from lunch to dinner. We couldn't handle the spice in the morning. Lunch and dinner was okay, but the spice in the breakfast was a little bit...
In the morning, yeah, a little bit different.
You know, we're pretty Americanized over here.
It's a trip that everyone should take, not only to China, but to search out their roots, wherever, whatever part of the world that you're from, your ancestors are from. Go seek it out.
I agree. It gives you a different perspective.
Bucket list. It's a bucket list thing.
Definitely a bucket list to do. And I'm glad that we were able to cross that off our bucket list. A wonderful time in China, and thanks to all the Chinese people and communities that took a part in our trip. And it was fun.
Yeah, I did that once in Greece. Now, you know what's on my bucket list now to go to Wrigley Field in Chicago?
Yeah, you have not gone to Wrigley Field in Chicago?
Have you?
No, I'm sorry.
That's one of my bucket lists. Hey, maybe next year. Who knows?
Take me along. I'll let my wife know. That's part of work. And I'm carrying, you know, John Malice's suitcase. I mean, his interpreter.
You're my PR guy.
Yeah, we're in trouble. We're in trouble if I'm your PR guy.
Hey, we got a lot of issues to talk about. Blong Jeong is our guest today. He's a city councilman, a good guy. One of the good guys on the council has always agreed to appear here. He represents District number one, a very poor district. So I want to get right to it. Everybody is talking about these water rates now, tripling in size. You get the water bill, and you go, oh, my God, it tripled in size. Why? In the next three years. Are you in favor of it? I'm going to put it that way. Let's just get it right out there. Are you in favor?
Well, that's why we're having those discussion community meetings, because I want to hear from our community. And we've asked our department directors, as they go through this 45-day process, you know, to hear...
What's the 45-day process? What is that all? Explain what that is.
That's part of the rules. Before you do that, because it is a public issue, and to raise the rates is required that you go through this process. So they came, the city came, and said, look, we need to do this. We need to raise. We said, okay, but you have to go through this process that's put in place. And with that, so they have 45 days to move forward. And all the council members, from what I can see, is having different communities in their areas. And I'm having two that's coming up, I think, August 6th and 8th. One in within the Fresno High City area, College area, and the other one's west of the 99. And that's an important thing for me, because it helps me gauge where my community is, what their interests are, and gives the city to explain why they're looking to do what they're doing, but also get a chance to hear what the community's concerns are, and how that's going to be addressed. Because that's going to impact my decision at a certain level. And so it is important that our community, and I'm encouraging to those that are out there still wanting to know the whole story, what this is all about.
So this 45-day period, each district has like a hearing?
Well, each council members, it's up to them to do. But from what I've seen, I think every council member is having at least a minimum of one community meeting. There are certain council members, I think, Councilmember Cantaro, right here, you guys are in his district, he's having at least three community meetings.
Okay.
Where residents come out.
It's not at the council chambers, but it's like a town hall-type meeting.
It is. And, you know, I love the work that we do at the council chambers. Sometimes it's not conducive to community engagement, to community input, and a type of dialogue that we need to have. And that's why it's important that we have this at community sites.
But Blong, let's be honest. You're not going to have a community meeting where everybody is going to sit down in one room and say, yeah, we agree, we should triple the water rates.
Oh, definitely not. And if I thought that, then I would be sadly mistaken. This is important, we hear what our community is concerned, what their real issues are. And also, they have a perspective to kind of say, okay, why? Right? So to hear from the city's perspective, maybe they've heard certain things, and it's not necessarily the accurate thing. So give the city perspective of why the water rates...
So you need to inform your constituency and your district?
One is to inform, but I think the more important thing is to listen and hear what they have to say as well.
I see, I see.
So it's not just to say, this is what we're going to do. This is about engagement, to say, this is what we're looking to do. What is it that you're hearing? What do you feel about it? Is it crazy? Is it not? Why is it, or is it justified? Or even if we are, at what level are we looking at to do this?
Yeah. We're talking with Blong Jeong. Issues that affect you need to call in. 436 ME TV, Option 11. And hit Option 11 as soon as possible. You need to weigh in on this if you are concerned about, you know, your water rates possibly going up in the next three years. 436 ME TV, Option 11. Back with our guest, Blong Jeong, in just a moment.
I love a joke.
Say, Lucy?
Yeah, Ricky?
And Trump came up to me in the street, and he said he hadn't had a bite in weeks.
What'd you do, bite him?
Opening joke, opening butler joke, buddy, come on.
The manager says to the butler, geez, did you put fresh water in the Goldfish bowl? And the butler says, why? They didn't drink up what I gave them last night.
You know that ancient joke about the guy who saves his regiment? Shoots the cook?
No. How's it go?
First, it was Measure G. That went down in defeat, of course, at the hands of the public. They did not want their garbage rates taken over by a private company, because I guess many people feared that the rates would in fact go up drastically over the course of three to five to 10 years. They didn't want that. They figured the status quo was the best thing to do. Well, now, they are looking to possibly raise or triple your water rates. Water meters are already in in the city of Fresno over the next three years. What do you think about it? 436 ME TV, Option 11. We do have a phone call. Blong Jeong is our guest. Good morning. You're on with Blong Jeong. What's your question?
A contentious issue, this water rate increase, the proposed water rate increase. I have a comment, I have a question for your guest this morning, John. My comment is, shouldn't the burden of increased cost relative to water supply, fresh water supply for the city, shouldn't it fall upon the new development? Shouldn't established customers of the city of Fresno Water, shouldn't they be grandfathered in, be granted special consideration? And all this new development, the new tracts of homes, the ones that are putting the real burden or the current burden on water resources, shouldn't they be targeted? I guess that's a question and a comment to your guest.
Oh, no. And I think that's part of an important question that we're posing to our staff. I mean, part of new development not only is because of our community's growing. People would say, well, you know, we're in such a tough time, but community's still growing. And so development increase, although we charge different fees for the development, water is one of those. And how do they participate as part of the growth that we're looking to, in terms of our community, not just infield growth, but also outside growth? And that's why, one of the things that we're talking about is limiting some of those outside growth as well, to keep it within the sphere. And what we're trying to do, limit some of the costs, and help make sure that we share the costs, not only with our residents, but all the people that impact the city's growth.
You represent District 1, a very poor district. Jobs are not...
I want to make sure it's not too poor. We're a working district.
Jobs are not plentiful in that district. There's crime there, as you well know, and not any fault of yours. But you're talking about people that are in the lower end of things, the lower-income people, who may not be able to afford their water rates at the current rate. So how, you being a man of the people, and I've heard that, you're the man of the people more than any other, you and Sal Cantaro on the city council, more than any other. How can you justify tripling the water rates if, I'm not saying you are in favor of it, but how can anybody justify that specifically in District 1?
Well, I think it's looking at the overall impact. And you're right. I mean, I represent not just the district, but a segment of community that fits that core, that terminology extremely well, you know, in terms of low-income, community of colors, that are faced with just trying to make the basic payment. So that's an important piece of my community that I have to pay attention to, because I'm an advocate by heart.
Right.
But with that in mind, we have to also continue to look at what is also the best thing for the entire city. And as we continue to grow, what does that mean? And our water, sometimes it's not just the city's responsibility. We have federal guidelines that we have to make sure that we address. And then also to make sure that we're providing sustainability, not just for what it is now, but also for the growth of our community. Again, our community is, even in these tough times, continues to grow. Now, it may not have grown at the percentage that we expect, but it has continued to grow. And a growing community, a growing city like us, have to be able to make tough decisions to make sure. And water is one of those in short supply. You know that.
Yeah.
And if we don't protect it now, we're not going to be able to protect it for our children.
There is, and you bring up some good points. You have to meet certain guidelines, city, state, federal guidelines with water. There's no question about that. I mean, I'm not disregarding these. But you know, there are all sorts of rumors out there right now that say that, you know, this is a Mayor Swearengen project. She's, you know, getting revenge on the people for the defeat of Measure G, the garbage issue, of course. And now she wants to triple the water rates. And so, you know, Lee Brand is kind of spearheading this thing. But how do you balance the two, with keeping with federal-state guidelines, yet knowing that there are so many people out there hurting, that, you know, they may let their yards go brown. They may not water their yard because they can't afford it.
If it was, you know, an administrative initiative, I hope that that's not what it is, because you know that I've been on the opposite side of Measure G in terms of administration. And I fought that from beginning to end.
Sure, I know you did. You and Sal and Oliver Baines.
That's correct. And I hope that this is not part of getting back. I don't believe it to be. And that this is a different issue that we're looking to, and it's being brought forward to all of us to discuss. But that has always been, I think I take my job very seriously when it comes to balancing things out, that we're looking, not just a segment of our community, but the entire community. And our entire community includes those that sometimes we call the Tale of Two Cities, south of Shaw, the challenged community that I...
It's always been that way since I've been here, Tale of Two Cities, north and south.
So it's been my job to make sure that we have a balanced perspective in growth, in terms of the things that we want our city to do, in terms of how we impact all of our citizens.
Now, why are they talking about raising the rates? What's the purpose? What is this money going to be used for? What do they need it for?
Well, one of the things, obviously, is the huge infrastructure that we're, as I've said, the city continues to grow. And we need this facility, as explained by city staff, to be built so that we have a water system that we're able to deliver across the entire city.
Is it the infrastructure that you're talking about, improving?
Yes. Well, one part is the infrastructure. The other one is the facility that I believe that has been proposed in southeast Fresno, that we need to be able to deliver our water system throughout the entire city, not just where it's built, but really throughout the entire city in a efficient manner. And also, it keeps our water sustainable for the current and also future.
Take a call here. Good morning. You're on with Blong Jeong. What's your question? Quickly.
Well, question I have, if you rate my water rates anymore, I'm taking Navy showers. I'm hardly washing, putting water on my grass. It's getting yellow. I mean, any more money out of me, and everything's going to be brown, and I'm going to be taking Saturday showers only.
Okay, okay. What's your question for Blong? Do you have, that's kind of a comment. Do you have any questions?
Well, the question is, is why is the city deciding to hike up our water when we can't afford what we have now?
Okay, I'll let him answer.
Well, it hasn't been done yet. It's been proposed. And if those are the things, I'm not sure what district gentleman, but these are important comments that we have. Because we're going to have to, like you said, there has to be a balanced approach to this. We have to look not only for what is now and what is in the future. Part of, I think, some of the tough decisions that I've said to you, John, has been decisions should have been made early in the past, instead of waiting until, until there's like a point of return. Then it impacts the citizenship, our residents, a lot more. And these are the things that we have to gauge all the time in terms of the decisions that we make.
Another call here. Good morning. You're on with Blong Jeong. What's your question today?
Hello. I have not much more of a question, or yes, it is, but it's more of a comment.
Okay.
Why is it that our water bill keeps tripling? And I'm not in the city Fresno. I'm calling in because I watch the show often. But I'm curious, why is it that if those of us, because a customer, or a customer, yeah, just called in and said his grass is going to turn gray, green, dirt, why is it that our bills are tripling in the water concept part? You guys are deceiving the customer. It's not the water bill that is high. It's the wastewater. The wastewater side is where you guys really, really must triple. So if you're going to triple our water rates, is the wastewater going to go nine times higher? Now, I am really good at conserving water. I'm 50% below my usage, and I'm calling from the city of Teleri. And they dread me for my wastewater. Why is it that the wastewater is so high? If you're going to do that to us, are we looking at our wastewater going high also? It's like this hidden charge that nobody knows about. It's in the fine print. If you turn around, I don't even think that your guest today has really atomized his bill to where he can sit there and say, yeah, you're right. It's not my water bill that's high. It's my wastewater. Why do you guys charge us so much for our wastewater?
Okay, let Blong try to address that. Go ahead.
Well, you're probably accurate in terms of atomizing all of my...
I haven't done that with my bill yet.
As to all the bills. I know, I mean, it's only my wife and I, so we, we're pretty somewhat conservative with our watering, too, but...
Yeah, we are, too.
You know, we're not a large family of seven, you know, our traditional Mong family of seven, eight, or even more. And they obviously use a lot more water than we do.
Yeah, well, they have to. I mean, you've got more people.
You do. And that's just the way it is. But I think you're right. It's a good question that in terms of wastewater, is there a different charge to it? How does that impacts the overall charge? You know, that's, that's why these community meetings are important, not during...
Most of us are in such a hurry to meet the deadline for the bill. We just write the check, and we don't look at it. You do the same thing. I'm sure you do.
I do, because my wife has it set up as an automatic payment now, so that I don't get late in terms of paying my bill.
So are we paying more for wastewater than we actually, the water that we use?
Well, as I said...
I don't even know.
That's a great question. And that's a question that I'll go directly and ask my director.
Ask that, yeah.
There's a very big difference. Like I said, it's going to be an interesting community meeting. It's an opportunity for me to listen.
When's the next meeting?
For me, in my district, I think we have it set for August the 6th and the 8th. We're working right now with two locations. It'll be in the evening. It'll be in the evening. We have, I think it's like at 6 o'clock.
Two locations.
Two locations will work. It's not confirmed. We're trying to finalize the next location right now. But we know for sure that one will be in the Fresno City College Tower area.
Okay.
And then the other one is west of the 99. And so we're working with our different partners to make that happen. And it's important. I'm going to, you know, we're going to send out our flyers, we're going to walk the neighborhoods, and we're going to ask for our participation as much as we can. That's why we're going on to the community.
Yeah. Well, you've got senior citizens that are on fixed incomes. You have low-income families. You have people that just, you know, they can't afford the increase in rates. So what do you think about it? 436 ME TV, Option 11. Back with more of Blong Jeong in a moment.
Is taking care of laundry taking too much of your time? Have you become a missing mom? With a new, fast, efficient washer and dryer from Ventura TV Video Appliance, you'll spend more of your day the way you want.
This Omana Super Capacity Washer-Dryer Pair is now just $6.99. And this heavy-duty Maytag Super Capacity Washer-Dryer Pair is only $8.99.
Don't spend your life on laundry. Upgrade today at Ventura TV Video Appliance and save.
So glad to have in Blong Jeong here, representing District 1 on the Fresno City Council. He's been on the council for seven years. Do you feel like an old guy? You've been, you're the senior member of the council.
I do feel like an old guy right now.
But you're now, how old are you, seriously?
Seriously, you're asking about my age on live TV?
I mean, I don't know. I mean, you know, usually you don't ask the age of a woman. Assume you're not a woman.
Let's just say I'm in my early 40s.
Your early 40s. See, there you go. You're not that old.
Well, it depends on what side that you're speaking from.
You've got your whole life ahead of you, right?
That's what some are telling me, and the others are saying, half of your life is already gone.
Yeah, you've got another 40, 50 years to go.
If I have a good habits, you know, eat healthy, and thank goodness for my wife, she's cooking good food and healthy food.
Got to work out.
And that as well. You know, I need to work out. You look good, you know?
We don't want to talk about that. Anyway, water rates, water rates. So the, we talked about the infrastructure, right?
Yes.
Is that what needs to be upgraded? That's what I'm hearing. You're talking about the delivery system?
Across the board. I mean, there's...
How the water gets to us from the plant to our house?
How the water gets to us is part, is a big piece of it. Some of the infrastructure needs that we have, I mean, we have, I think they've talked about some in the tower. We have pipes in there that has been in there from the beginning.
Wow.
And so we...
Over 100 years.
Yeah. So if we don't address those, when that thing blows up, I mean, it's not going to be cost-effective to try to affect it then.
All right, another call. Good morning. You're on with Blong Jeong. What's your question? Quickly.
Yeah, I got a question regarding a different issue.
Okay.
Does the city promote a double standard with promotion?
What's that again?
Does the city use double standards with promoting individuals?
I, you know, that's a personnel issue that we don't, on the policy side, we don't deal with personnel issue. That goes directly to the administration, the city manager. And we've been able to separate that part. I think it's probably the best thing.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Quick? Nope? Okay, caller's gone. Okay, so these water rates, I just want to clarify. You need to improve the infrastructure, which is going to cost probably millions of dollars to replace some of these, some of the pipes in there and the delivery system that's been in there, the infrastructure, more than 100 years.
There, like I said, there are some that I've heard that was the original wood, you know, that still hasn't been changed. So we've done it piecemally, which has not been the most effective way. And this gives us a chance, hopefully, to bring everything up to the current standard, if it's possible.
And just to clarify, you haven't decided yet if you're in favor or against.
I have none.
Okay, would you be in favor of letting the people decide, like they did Measure G?
Well, that's a frank discussion to have. I mean, if it goes that way. But I think that there's also some, making sure that our residents understand why it's being proposed. And I think making sure that they hear the reasons. And I think there's been some legitimate reasons that are brought forth, because we have to address this at some point. And the longer we wait, as you know, the cost and the time, money, we're going to be, at the end of the day, the resident's going to have to pay one way or the other. It is a delivery system that we use, that we utilize. And as we can find a way to try to address, meet the different issues that we have here, from our diverse community in terms of economic level, it's really the long-term sustainability piece, not just for us here now, but also for our children.
Where do we stand on the Fulton Mall issue? Where is that on the agenda? Does the mayor still want to rip out Fulton Mall? And are you in favor of, do you know how much that's going to cost?
Yes, it is. That's why I've been cautiously, cautiously raising some issues on that side.
What's that going to cost?
Haven't seen the whole proposal. They're working, they just received a grant, I think, from the Fed to help do and finalize some of the study, what the total cost is.
How much is that grant worth? A couple hundred million? Or 20 million?
No, no, no. I think it's a working grant.
20 million, right?
No, I don't think it's 20 million. I think it's initial. I think what we're trying to get is that, but I think the initial grant to do the study is a little bit less, a lot less than 20 million.
Okay, but you got a grant now for what, 2 million?
Yeah, I thought it was somewhere around there.
Around $2 million. So they're moving forward with this?
With the study. There's still three options from what I understand. There's not have been indefinite options to which one is selected. The grant is supposed to look at those three options, and then it brings it forth back to the council. One of the things that we made sure that that did not have a direct impact on our general fund, because the general fund is currently challenged.
I called this guy last night. He agreed to come on, short notice, and I appreciate your time. You're welcome here anytime. One of the good guys, Blong Jeong.
No, thank you very much.
Hopefully, you're for the people, always.
Well, I continue to fight for the people, whether they believe it or not. I've been a long advocate and a community advocate from my perspective.
You've got to come back sometime. Show us the pictures from China.
I don't know, me sweating it. I'm not sure. That's a great picture.
All right, we got to go. Back tomorrow with more of Connect with Me on ME TV Fresno.